This is David Benhammer. Benhammer? I think that's all right. So he wants to convert upstairs to a living space. You want to take that, Brady?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. So Mr. Benhammer requests a special exception permit for detached dwelling unit per Section 3.25-7.3 of the Amity County Code for property located on the east side of Richmond Road, which is Route 612 at 7161 Richmond Road. It is identified as tax map parcel 46-1-3 on the Amity County real property identification map, and it is located in the rural preservation area. The applicant has an existing garage. I included a picture in their agenda packet, and on the PowerPoint you can look up and you can see there's some trees around it, but that is the existing garage. It looks like a two-car garage, and it has what appears to be a sort of a half-story above as is common in garages usually used for storage space. This, the applicant had came in and was gonna have notified the building department that they were gonna make some interior modifications. Those modifications you should see in the agenda packet. There is a proposed drafted plan that lays out what all would be included. It would include a kitchenette, a full bathroom, a bedroom, and as our building permit technician was working with the gentleman, she then referred him to me as all those elements technically make the area a dwelling unit, meaning it has everything that is needed for an individual to live. It has all the facilities necessary to live. With that being a detached structure, I told him, you know, that it would be best, even though he had indicated it was only gonna be for personal use, that it'd be best, the only practice, to get a detached dwelling unit permanent. I did tell him, of course, that no one was ever gonna live in it, or, you know, he wasn't gonna be sleeping out there, that he likely would have no problem. But if he did feel that anything like that was gonna happen, he could go for that detached dwelling unit special exception prior to the issuance of the CEO. You know, we're seeing, we see a lot of this, you know, people build a garage and they wanna add some space out there and that's a little bit more, less, not like a garage per se, but a little bit more like a space in their dwelling area. I don't think I have any more comments. There's a map in the, behind the page that shows the draft. There's a map that shows his current house location and the garage location. It's over 150 feet off the road. It shows how it's all on that Lot 3. Mr. Benhammer does own the two parcels to the right of the property, and then the parcel to the left, there's a house on it, but that parcel owns a significant amount of property behind it of this timber lane.
Is he planning on using the same septic system as his house?
To my analogy, yes.
Yes.
My wife works from home, and I wanted to make it a whole office, and I didn't. We had two barking dogs, so she'd be on a pole and the dogs go crazy. So that was my initial idea, and have a kitchen and stuff, so she wouldn't have to walk back to the house to use the bathroom or to make the cup of coffee. Then, and we only had one and a half bedrooms, like a one-bedroom and a whole big lawn. So I said, well, if I'm spend all this money, I've spent 100 grand on the inside and 30 on the septic and the well, I'm gonna make it so that if I wanna spend the night over there, or the grandchildren come and visit, we have five grandkids, they've got a place to watch TV and hang in and stay up late. So he's right, we're not gonna rent it, we're not gonna use it as a house, but I felt like if there was a TV on at midnight and the neighbors see it, they call and say, somebody's living over there. It would be easier just to go ahead and do it right the first time and be done with it. What my mistake was, the state and the soil sample guy asked how many bedrooms, and I thought that was a calculation to the size of septic system. So I just said, two bedrooms. When in fact, it's just gonna be a whole office and a main cave, if you will.
So that number lot two, you own that lots?
Yes. And I'm not gonna build anything on it. When they widened Richmond Road and created the digits, they put the drain ditch right into the middle of that lot. So I think that's rid of an appealable piece of property.
So now the garage is just, just open space?
Yes.
Any commission members have a question?
You said something about a septic for a one-bedroom, are you gonna add a septic for this?
No, I'm saying I just did it. It's been done by the state.
So it adds a normal septic?
Yes.
So he has a two, two-bedroom septic system? And you use the same well as, as your house?
I did a well separate.
Did a well too?
Yeah.
Or you went and left?
Now, to be quite honest, we moved for five years to New York, and I kept this property. Now I've got a 10-by-30 storage completely full of all our furniture, and it's gotta be climate control, 'cause you know, who has ever sweats and stuff? I need a place to put that stuff. I'm paying $360 a month for the storage unit. I'd rather grab it over in the garage, you know?
Any more questions? Not all open to public hearing. Thank you. We may have some more questions once the public hearing's open.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, just to remind the planning commission, you guys can set conditions and you could put a condition on there that it would need to be for personal use or something like that. So let's say, you know, for some reason Mr. Benhammer left the property and someone else came in, that special exception runs with the property, but that person would have that access, and you could do that type of condition. That way, if it ever came back to my desk, I'd have that reference in our conditional use or special exception limits.
All right.
Set a thing that it can't be rental property.
All right. We'll open a public hearing on this proposal. Anyone like to speak? Just come forward, state your name and address. Anyone like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. With your pleasure. Any more questions?
I like it with the conditions.
With the conditions? What condition would you like?
It was a decision of being that it's not for like rental property in that.
In that case. Not be used as rental property.
Rental property.
Wanna put that, state that in the motion?
Yes. I would like to see that we approve it with the condition of that it not being rental property.
All right. You've heard the motion. Second, any more discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion making known by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. It'll be passed to the board supervisors, and they'll have the final vote whenever they meet, probably the next month. Appreciate it. Moving to the second. Best acceptance permit for Daryl Masse. There was one change on that, probably. On the front summary page, the landowner's not David. The landowner's the Masse sisters.
Mary Masse.
Mary. But other than that, everything else that you had in the package, you should be right. You wanna speak to that?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. You all, I think, are very familiar with this. It's the Countryside Shop, the old location off Vento Road. Mr. Masse, you probably are all familiar with his previous location. It was right at the end of, I think, State Mill and Route 60, Country Food and Furniture, which was a pretty, what I hear, I've never been there, but it's a go-to place for incredible sandwiches and other things. They had, were moving out of Palatan. I'm pretty sure that they, the person owning that shopping center is doing something there, and so they were sort of...
Pushed out.
Pushed out of there, right? And they decided to open up shop in Amelia at this old countryside shop. The only issue is that that place hadn't been run for like four or five years, and since it's in a rural preservation district, it's a use that requires a special exception. Now, if it would have been within two years, they could have gone forward with a non-conforming use authorization and kept using it, but being that that time had lapsed, it required a new special exception permit. But this permit will run with the property at this point. The property did not have one in the past. So that from this time, if you all were to recommend approval and the board approved it, this would run with that property and allow someone to operate the country and store out. Other than that, I don't think we have anything else.
Any questions or suggestions?
For public hearing for this?
Yeah. I'll open a public hearing now for the Daryl Masse. I'll open a public hearing now for the Daryl Masse Country Store opening. Anyone like to speak, state your name and address. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Uh, with your pleasure on this. Get a motion.
Yeah, I've probably been neck of the woods over there and I used to go to my farm and do work and I'd go down and get lunch every day and I kinda, I miss it. The Masse ladies did a really good job fixing lunch and everything and I, I've kind of missed it not being there. I think since it's kind of a neighborhood icon, I think we ought to, I'm, I'm in favor of it. I'll make a motion to approve it.
And I'll second it.
Motion been made in second. Any more discussion?
I'd like to speak in favor of the motion. The, the shopping center over in Palatan is, the whole thing is being torn down because of Sheek's is doing it. And frankly, I had a conversation with Daryl up on three-sixty. He's, he, he sells the buildings up there on three-sixty there to the west. And really, he, he tried to find several different places in Palatan that didn't work out. But he has a thriving business. And so there will be, there'll be people coming out of Palatan to, to this. And there's it, it, just as Roy said, it, it, there are a lot of people that go to poultry services up the road. And they would have places to, to go and get a good sandwich and so forth. And so this is, this is, this is a, this is a trad and true business going in. So it's not a, something that, that's risky. There are some, you know, some changes he's had making problems with, with the, the property. You can do exactly what they, what they need to do. But I just wanted to supply a little more information since I'm in that community.
Anyone else like to speak?
Mr. Chairman, I did receive one letter from neighbor property owners, Dorsey Drawhorn and the worst cry, speaking in favor, writing in favor of the story.
Yeah, across the road.
Yeah, I've seen a lot of positive feedback on social media about excitement about it, knowing that's coming. So I haven't seen any opposition.
Heard the motion, all in favor of the motion, making known by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Be passed to the board supervisor, vote on in the next month. Moving to the
He's not gonna try to move to Memorial Day weekend.
Oh, that's their new open date, is it?
Well, that's where it'll be moving and it'll be, it's gonna take about a week.
All right, this next application coming in, I'll speak on it since my name's on it, but I brought this to Kelly sometime back, that we'd been approached about putting in a digester system using our manure from the cattle to feed the bugs to make methane. I told her to look into it at that time to see if it was viable in the county. This is the first one in the state. So please ask plenty of questions, cause we need to get it right. We don't wanna be like a solar farm, solar, not a farm anymore, but a solar project. And so that's, I'll let Brady speak to that and Vanguard is here tonight to give a presentation to tell you kind of what it is and what it entails.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Before you all commissioners, as a zoning text amendment, this amendment would include a new use definition titled agricultural resource reclamation facility. This would be allowable or permitted as a special exception use in the A-five and R P five zoning districts. So prior to this use being authorized, if this zoning text amendment is recommended for approval and approved, it would also require another special exception process for you all to, to vet and request. When approached by the applicants, you know, over the last couple of months, there was really nothing in our ordinance that this use could be classified as. And so working with them, they came up with this term and presented a term and definition. And I'm gonna read that proposed definition here to you now. It's a waste reformation facility in which agricultural and/or other organic waste is collected, processed and converted into sources of energy and agriculturally beneficial materials such as liquid fertilizer, soil amendment and/or animal bedding, using the process of anaerobic co-dig, co-digestion. Basically, I'll give you a brief overview. The individuals, we have representatives from Vanguard present that do have a presentation that they can present to you a lot more detailed. But basically, as Mr. Warrior said, they're bringing in, they're bringing manure from the cattle and they're bringing an off-site food waste to the operation. So they have an organic receiving facility and then they, they blend those two products together and end up discarding any of the leftover packaging from the food waste. And the remaining organic material, methane is siphoned off and then whatever's left, solids and liquids, is used as mentioned in the definition for liquid fertilizer or some other type of soil amendment or animal bed.
Well, so what's the primary purpose, making methane?
Yes, sir, to my, to my knowledge.
That doesn't fall under some sort of alternative energy stuff?
No, because really what this, in our agricultural districts where this is at, it's really, and it's not solely an ag, it's really an ag industrial use. And the reason why is because they're gonna be bringing in a number of, of tractor-trailers on a daily basis. Like twenty to twenty-five, I think, is what, when we first met was what their projection was. That could be different if you could ask them that same question. But a number of tractor-trailers that are bringing in off-site food waste to this facility. So it's almost like an industrial facility with an ag component. So it's a little bit of a blend there. And so we really, all we have is really like a, a waste side, like a, a landfill type side. But that's more of our industrial, so for our ag areas, we really didn't have a use there or present our ag areas. It's really either ag general, ag limited, or ag intensive. The only other two is like in-user waste storage or bulk waste storage, but those really didn't fit what this was, what this would do. So this new use would, would open up that ability for an operation like this to get permitted, which is, is assisting a farmer and, and contributing to their operation. And, and sometimes even neighboring farmers that they also would receive some of the liquid fertilizer or soil amendment. But it also is in a way gonna be a little bit of an industrial component there on the farm that you all, you know, need to be aware of. With the, with the different traffic generation and stuff that's gonna occur, that wouldn't occur every single day on your average farm. You know, maybe during peak harvest seasons or something, you might have this type of traffic, but not every day throughout the course of a, of a calendar year. So with that being said, I probably have too much to add myself. I'm a, you know, I'm more of a layman in terms of, of what this operation is, but the professional representatives are here, they have a presentation are more than capable of answering their questions if you have any. For me, I'll answer them this time, but if not, I'll, I'll pass it over to them if that's okay with you guys.
I think probably let them give their presentation that might bring some questions up. And thanks, thanks seriously about, just cause we, we wanna know the solace right. We want it right, we want it right because it
And you said, not in state currently.
Not in state current. The E Q's working on the regs now.
Where do you think this will go? On y'all's farm?
No. Oh, it is, okay. That's what I was gonna ask, it says landowner, but then it's not really.
It's gonna be pumped, pumped in from my new facility. The manure is pumped from my new facility to feed this. It's between my new facility and the river.
Thank you. They probably have several tractor-trailers a day, send it rows down the river?
I don't know, B dot has to look at that too.
Said twenty-five trucks coming in.
Up to, they, they'll discuss that.
But again, we're not here approving your facility, we're just approving the definition of the use.
So what's the limiting factor? Is it the amount of manure, the limiting factor?
Yeah, normally on the, the digesters that have been out, for a thousand cows plus. And most of them are north New England states. And now they've got it down more to a size where smaller farms with less manure. But you have to have enough acres to spread.
So is it?
Manure plus the food products that's left over.
So it's still yours, but they're like running it, is that?
They, they rent.
They rent.
They rent X number of acres at a certain price. Our responsibility is to move all of manure that we pump to them and whatever they add to it away from there. And then it's part of stry, that we'll use for bedding in the freestalls or can go on land, it's compost. The rest would be a liquid that we would pump, just like we pumped manure yesterday and day before yesterday.
The, the definition, it talks about agriculture and/or other organic waste. None of it's gonna be human waste or anything, is it?
No human waste. And food byproducts, far as I know, that come in, they're under contract, have to be certain specs before they accept it. It's not like garbage from a restaurant. It's more like a, when my sons went, saw it was like ice cream that didn't have enough chocolate chips in it. French fries that got damaged in the craye, things like that. It's a food product, but it's, it's not, not saleable, which would normally go to landfill. We discussed, I brought this up at meetings we had last week between the zoning and C I P. And the question was, they'll separate all the metal, all the paper and all that, just goes to recycle. Anything else would go to a landfill. And David asked if that would, they'd be paying a price to put it in landfill, which we gotta note back that they would, they'd be looking into this. So the county would get some dollars from that. But I'll let them give a presentation and I'm sure it'll start some questions from me and questions from you.
And, and Mr. Easter, when the time comes to facilitate, as the vice chair, you go ahead and take that, facilitate any type of motion or?
Yeah, I won't ask for that.
Mr. Warrior.
You wanna speak?
Great presentation. I hope we all, we hopefully will answer some of your questions. Yes, thank you for the opportunity to address all you tonight and talk through a mobile home development. This will be carried through the proposition of this text amendment, which should cover the sustainability aspect. So I figured I'd start with kind of who Vanguard Renewables is, how we operate, walking through the process, kind of walking through truck traffic and what's coming into the facility, because that's always a focus, and touch base on kind of what's coming out of the facility. So who's Vanguard Renewables? We're an owner-operator developer of digesters across the country. We've been doing so for just shy of a decade. We started in New England and we're developing, as you can see throughout the country. It's kind of two sides of our business. One is manure-only digestion, which has, as mentioned earlier, that's, have you heard of anaerobic digestion before? It's popular throughout the U S and it really deals with those large dairies. To make it economic, it's four thousand cows plus, so. Those large dairies of scale, they can take advantage of this manure management technology. But for the small and medium-sized dairies, three to five hundred cows or so, this, this technology really hasn't been rolled out. And that's kind of where, where Vanguard comes in. So anaerobic digestion as a process is essentially, you know, utilization of the biology that's in a cow's stomach and putting a mechanical spin on it. So manure comes in from the dairy, we capture all their manure. In that manure are methane gens, they're little bugs. They break down the organic material that a cow ingests. And, you know, methane is produced, cow burps, cow farts, cow manure has methane coming off of it, that's from those bugs in there. So we take advantage of those, collect all that manure, combine it with food waste that would have otherwise, otherwise been landfill. And then adds that process, now we control it, it's a controlled environment, it's an environment tank, similar to composting. Breaks down over about thirty days. Then what is left is gas, so we capture that gas, clean it up and send it back to the gas grid. Used to eat homes or, or so. And then what's left is kind of that digested material. So it's a slurry material, we separate it out, that's called digesting. We separate it out into the liquid and solid. As mentioned, solid will be used as bedding for the cows or soil amendment. It has lots of organic matter in it, so it's really good for water retention in soil. So if it's not used for bedding, that's another use or plant, plant potting is another use. But most of this will be used by the dairy. And then the liquid portion has a high nutrient value and can offset commercial fertilizer use. It's all inert, so it was food and it was manure and now it's, you know, the same constituents of both of those that the soil can uptake actually a little better than commercial fertilizer. So kind of focusing on the process a little bit, what goes into the system is kind of four streams. We have, you know, the manure obviously from the dairy and then we have slurry food grade material. This is beer, this is already liquefied material that is food grade, would have otherwise gone for human consumption, but it's already liquefied, it doesn't need any further processing. So potato chip manufacturing, processed water or beer or other liquids from a food process that, you know, sometimes land applied or otherwise has to get processed in a wastewater treatment plant. So we kind of direct that to, to a tank that doses it to the digester. And then outside of that, packaged and mixed solid food come in. And so the packaged food is pallet of ice cream that one bag or it's a bunch of potato chips, cheeses, packaged material, packaged food. And then the mixed food is similar, but mostly from grocery stores and a lot of times where that comes from, so it's mixed. And then there's lots of different types of packaging rather than pallet of the same thing. So the packaging needs to get separated from the actual food. So what we do is, you know, we run it through the system. Some of it's hand separation, some of it's maceration to kind of separate the organic material out from packaging. Packaging is taken and it's either sent to the landfill as mentioned or recycled. Obviously, we wanna recycle as much as we can, both from a revenue standpoint, but also just, you know, the recycling material. And then what's left is kind of, we take some of the liquids that come in and act as processed water to kind of turn that organic stuff into a slurry. And so all of that is combined and sent into the digester and that's where the magic happens. What comes out is the gas and then the agricultural byproducts, so the digesting. So from a truck standpoint, we're, we're planning to take in two-hundred-and-twenty-five tons per day of organic material. And so that can come into kind of all those different streams as mentioned. It's either liquid already or it's packaged food that needs to be processed. It's about fifty-fifty roughly of the stuff that can go right to the digester in that top bubble or needs to be processed in that bottom bubble. And so the one way to think about that is the waste stream that is leaving the site is really only coming from that bottom bubble. It's that ten trucks per day of packaged material roughly. But from a trucking standpoint, what we plan to take in, depending on truck size and loads, load volume is about eighteen on the low end, twenty-one is the projected high end with up to twenty-five in the case that small loads come in. But the breakdown of the material, kind of what needs to be processed is in that light blue. What can go right to the digester is in the orange. And then, sorry, that light blue and orange can go right to the digester and the darker blue. So seeing here, so. So this is kind of the just diagram I've shown, the stream of truck traffic that would come in. And again, we're planning And again, uh, we're planning to divert the truck traffic from any residential areas. We go right from, um, the road east of the dairy.
Six oh eight.
So, uh, and of course we'll solve it with B dot to make sure I have any weight restrictions. Focusing on what specifically that feedstock coming in is, um, just to be more granular. Slurry food waste is a lot of that. And as mentioned, the cheeses, cereal, packaged waste, soda, that's in the bottle. It needs to be taken out of the bottle. Dairy products is another chunk that's, you know, away from dairy processed, dairy processing waste, expired belt by screen. Uh, and then the rest of it is little fats, oil and greases, baker grease from restaurant, grease traps from restaurant. Uh, and I want to note there that anything greasy does get broken down in this process. So what comes out? If grease comes in, grease doesn't come out. Uh, that anaerobic digestion process breaks down. Greases in the system, so to speak. And then finally, food processing down, which, um, this potato chip will process part I mentioned. Just in that, uh, sugar temples like molasses, grease and such, kind of the last bit that comes in. That's that's a predominant amount of material that's going in that's not. People often ask how the heck we get that stuff. You know, it's it's a bit of an art and that's kind of, we partner with larger clients that have a national footprint that kind of are in the food production industry, have a consistent waste stream. So you know, some of the companies we partnered with may recognize up there. And so that will be kind of those anchor clients that help us source some of the consistent waste. Um, and then we'll work with local food suppliers to kind of make up the rest. Uh, but one thing to note is this is a diet. So the digester is a living, breathing system. So toxins can't come in, will kill the biology. It's just like you or me, it needs a diet. So it's a balanced diet and these are the kind of the pieces of the puzzle that get made into that. So just a brief overview of what the facility looks like, um, and where we're hoping to to develop it. Um, on the left there is a lagoon and that's where that digestate will be stored prior to land application for planting to pipe from the lagoon to the application fields. Uh, and then it'll be injected. So that's what we're planning to do with liquids. And then the the other, the digesters are up here, these two circles. Organics receiving area, it's this box. Uh, and then there's some gas cleaning equipment, um, storage container. Similar areas, pieces of equipment. Uh, and then the dairy, the new dairy facility map wasn't updated to include that, but it's about this footprint, so. Just to give you some point of reference and we'll be building our own road to access from here. So lastly, just briefly, kind of digestate is what's coming out of this. And so traditionally, what's being spread on the fields now is manure. Um, and it's injected, so that's been fed within a lot of states, but, uh, manure has an odor to it. And so what this, the main, the main benefit of spreading digestate is kind of twofold. One, it's actually multi-fold. So one is that it's processed. And so from a vector risk standpoint, it's broken down. So the perceived load is lower than it would be in food waste that's, that otherwise could be directly land applied or biosolids, which is not this, but that's what other material could be spread on fields or, uh, but there's vector risk is lower because that processing, um, it's obviously better for the soil and I'm going to put better in air quotations, depends on how you measure better, but, um, it's taken up by the soil and it's an inert material that came from the soil. Uh, so relative to commercial fertilizer, um, has a better yield. Um, it reduces odor drastically though. So, uh, as anybody who's visited the system, uh, happy to bring a sample if that's required of kind of what that digestate looks like. And really, through the digestion process, all the odor of the manure is broken down. And so, uh, that's a major benefit to community members is that you won't have a smell manure on application day. Uh, there's really just sometimes a sweet smell, but mostly not at all. So that's that's a main benefit. Some other benefits here, higher crop yields, uh, lower risk of nutrient runoff because it's taken up by the soil more than commercial fertilizers, which otherwise. Yeah, that's that's the system. I'm happy to answer any questions at a high level, either now or.
So the digestion processing, it kills like E. coli and all that stuff?
For the most part, yeah. Yep. Somebody goes a hundred and five degrees over time. I'm not a biologist, but there's no E. coli that.
The the only reason I'm asking is because you were in real close proximity to that metro. So maybe I'm asking.
So, uh, no E. coli, most diseases are broken. So it's thirty days at eight hundred.
Vanguard do the spreading of the liquid? Does Vanguard do the spreading?
So we give these products back to the farmers. So the farmers will be doing the land application. And then it'll be taken solids, infusing it as bedding in the free stalls and then it'll be fine. And and I will know that, uh, the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality is kind of working on what they nutrient management plan, they call it, uh, we'll have to abide by. So we're the facility creating it. The farmers are the ones applying it. So the nutrient management plan will be kind of shared by us both, but ultimately, you know, if we're producing X amount of nitrogen and the soil can only take X plus five, we we won't go over that limit. And so if 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 in ten years, it sort of becomes nitrogen loaded, uh, which is unlikely because we planned for that, but if that were to happen, uh, there's technology that we can employ to kind of make sure that doesn't get land applied and disposed. But ultimately, yeah, it's it acts as fertilizer.
Yeah. So that was my question. If you've got, uh, I mean, obviously you've got a lot more inputs coming in, two hundred and some tons a day. And you've got to get that spread on the land. What happens when you get to the point if you it's phosphorus? But I mean, what's what's the average nutrient content of what comes out of there?
Off the top of my head, I mean, I'm not the, I'm a megromus. It's more so than manure. Uh, the ni- it's high in nitrogen. Relatively even than phosphorus. Um, I I have data points on that I can share with you if you'd like. Uh, it, based on our desktop calculations, this material nutrient value will cover their acreage. And so that's what separates this project from a lot of them because smaller dairies tend to not have a ton of acres. Uh, but when you have a smaller dairy, a lot of acres, then the added nutrient value of that food waste coming in can be taken up by that extra acreage that isn't already getting manure.
And then does any extra go offsite or you get it all? Like it, does it, how much is it producing? Is it producing way more than you need and then that gets sold and can go to other folks? Or do you, is it all go to you and you have to figure it out?
It's all, it's all ours.
Okay. So then if you choose to sell, that's you.
If we have done all our land, right now we do not cover a hundred percent of our land. But we contacted neighbors around there at Dewcroft and they were hauling Friday and Saturday, tractors with their trailers. And, uh, the way we're setting it up, we'll be pumping it underground out to some fields. So it'll be closer. If we do have to haul it offsite, it will not be as much road traffic.
So how quick do you have to spread? Is there any storage on site? I mean, it's that much?
I have, I have two lagoons and then they have a lagoon.
Okay. So you're all in weather conditions where it can't spread.
So the lagoon storage, we will have a lagoon for six months of production for us. Because I actually bought that. And then they have their, so their manure storage that they already produce is accounted for. And then what's coming in, we have, uh, adequate storage for. Well, only using our lagoon, theirs is just kind of auxiliary. The system goes down from it and said you can't take that manure, then it goes back into where it's going now. But traditionally, um, it'll come from the system and we have a field that, uh,
Everyone is very tailored to the farmers. I mean, where's your closest one to Virginia?
So we have a manure-only site in Georgia that's operational. Organic sites that are operational are in New England, Massachusetts and Vermont. And then we have another one. Likely going into construction at the end of this year, about a year of construction and that's going to be Wisconsin. And then Pennsylvania will.
So how much methane storage will you have on site and what do you do with it? How often you shipping?
Good question. So the methane storage is minimal. Uh, we contract for, so the project is twenty years. Uh, we contract for gas uptake for that. And so with this project, there's no pipeline directly nearby yet. Hopefully natural gas comes and that will be the case. But right now what we'll be doing, um, is trucking that gas. It's about a truck every other day of gas. And so, uh, it's kind of a slow fill process. The the largest amount of gas is in the digesters that's onsite and that's only about sixty percent methane. So from a plant availability standpoint, that's very low. Um, if a cap comes off, it would be this pressure ride, so it would be noise, but it's not going to explode, uh, which is often a concern. Uh, but from that high pressure gas, it's about a truck load. That's for some twenty-four to forty-eight hours. Uh, and then we truck that to a, uh, central injection point. From a gas storage standpoint, there's not going to be a giant gas storage, uh, tank on site.
Does the methane go right in with the natural gas? I know there's some methanes in natural gas already, but that.
Well, they have to clean the methane.
We go from sixty percent, which is kind of what comes out of the digester, we clean it up to ninety-five plus percent. And the gas, so those specs are set by the the gas utility. Those one be covered. So that that's, uh, once it's in the pipeline, it's all.
I think, uh, Jeremy Moore, your Larkin son, back there raised his hand on the analysis. Do you know the analysis of this?
Um, they provided us with samples from some other, their, uh, some facilities running in New England that used to be manure. And it was about twenty-five, sixteen, eighteen. At twenty-five, that's per thousand gallons that has stayed is twenty-five units. And our manure runs. Eight pounds of nitrogen. Phosphorus.
Right now, we have to take samples of the lagoon. I hear six months.
Instead of.
Land.
Wow. That's how you lose the nitrogen. And this for our acreage and their projections counts. Digestate, it would place all of our fertilizer beans and then we can probably have some. And the piping could set up. That's how, um, and part of the contract, they they don't spread that if you're paying per gallon. That way, that's not, that's our responsibility. That way, that would become an issue. Or to bust them all or something like that. That's not an issue.
So on the eastern shore, I would sure here, but, uh, the, it's kind of a limit on the amount of nitrogen or famine and so forth during the winter time. That, uh, you know, when things are not going to use. That would if, would that be a problem in the?
Project is going to be paying a half billion gallons. Burn on farms. Three million gallons of, uh, manure, but then are being older manure bins and bowls. And they were projecting twelve million per year.
Yeah. Well, I mean, you can't be doing it during.
Yeah.
Really.
It would make it like early manure in spring and early fall.
We build in that storage, you kind of cover the, your primary, your monster. We're used to working in New England where you cannot spread at all for six months of the year, frozen solids. Some kind of that's what that storage is primarily used for. Otherwise, they'll be applying, uh, those cold boxes, that's just.
Will this facility be manned? I mean, jobs, two, three, four?
No, five to ten full-time employees for the lifetime of the project. And then about two hundred plus or minus is the construction jobs for them about a year or so if all goes right.
Somebody be on site for twenty-four hours?
So if people are on site for usually it's ten to twelve hour shifts and then everything's remote, we monitor, then we hire both weeks for that. So so the operators currently, they don't sleep there. Uh, but they're there nearby and we kind of tie that to network. So if there's a alarm that goes off, they get an alarm on their phone, they rotate shifts. Somebody has a night shift every night and night. And then the farmers are close by if, you know, in the in the interim between an operator coming to save them, if a alarm going off, if they need to flip the switch, they'll have that arrangement.
Is it typical to have some kind of terrain burn in case there was a catastrophic problem with the digesters above ground, keep it out of the river or something?
So yes, there will be stormwater, um, all the liquids kind of go into the lagoon, which is contained, um, CC.
I imagine DQs will be very involved as well.
We've already engaged with them and they're kind of finalizing what they'd like us to do from the environmental standpoint. Supposed to be here back as we patch this.
Sounds like you're processing a lot of liquid. Are you going to bring all that liquid in or are you going to get it from another water source?
So we actually use, we use some water, maybe, and we'll be drilling our own well for that. Uh, but mostly we bring a lot of that liquid in. Or we can recycle the digestate as processed water. Water is a cost, so we try to minimize that. As we're taking in liquids to kind of feed the system, manure has liquid as well. Uh, that can kind of all be recycled.
I noticed you have a lot of national farms on there, obviously, like Starbucks and Cadet and stuff. But if you moved to Virginia, would you look at like, like more local Richmond area farm, you know?
The more local we can, uh, there's a hauling cost associated with that again coming in. So probably the Richmond metro areas where a lot of that. But as mentioned before, there's no human waste coming in. Grocery waste is actually not used out because it's so sorted. There's no municipal waste. We're not yet doing, um, organics, pick up, uh, houses or anything. It's mostly that bulk, um, standing back.
What's the estimated lifespan of the cell?
So it's twenty to forty years. So we have a contract to run it for twenty years and that's kind of what we build it for. But we can mutually, uh, keep it running for, it's how the contract is based. But the facility itself, uh, we're designing for twenty and then.
Not that I think this is going to happen, I hope it does, but there's in the last several years, you've been a rash of dairy farmers having to go out of business. What happens if can't make any money, can't survive twenty years? What does that do for you?
Well, so the goal of putting this here is to kind of help those small and medium-sized dairies stay around. That consolidation is happening in the dairy industry. This is a way that can financially diversify them. It's a, it's a lease payment that's irrespective of the dairy market. Uh, it's fertilizer for their fields that offset kind of the cost of fertilizer. And so that's part one is we kind of help help try and mitigate that risk. And then alternatively, kind of the contracts are set up. If somebody comes in and buys the dairy, they're contractually, you know.
So it's just manure from yours, though? Like not, local farmers don't bring in theirs?
One last question. How are you going to take cow manure and make animal bedding out of that? I'm curious.
Wonderful, same thing.
So they actually do it already. So basically it goes through a screw press. So it just. So they actually do it already. So basically it goes through a screw press. So it just gets compressed and then there's a screen and the solid fibrous material falls out of it. A liquid is kind of is brass it, press out. But the digestion process really again reduces the vectors and that. So actually, depending on the management practices, you can skip the digester. There's a dairy, um, in Northern Virginia that I know of that does strictly manure through a screw press and then back to the cows. And if the biology works and it's managed well, it's, it's from the cow. So actually, actually ready to that's, that's mostly management practice thing. And I'm not a dairy farmer, so I don't want to speak too out of turn, but, but that is a practice that's used. Warmer, warmer climates will tougher, obviously. Uh, Virginia's kind of in that.
Depends on if you're using organic or animal bedding. I'm bedding right now is sand. So we've got to put a sand lane in to separate the sand out from this manure. A sand fills lagoons up.
Right.
But if you're using shavings or sawdust mixed with manure, you can, you can get all the water out and it'll come back. With no smell.
So if you want more animal bedding, you just feed them more hay.
There are changes going on in the dairy industry and I don't know a whole lot about it, but just I read an article this weekend on Vermont that you talked about. Where the organic, there is smaller organic, there is a very popular. But they were having such a difficult time that the state legislature is actually pass some legislation to help them out.
It won't happen for Virginia.
It ain't gonna happen in Virginia.
Any more questions for Nick?
Would be a large impact on like the Amelia landfill?
So would be probably substantial, uh, but it would be so that two hundred to twenty-five pounds per day. How many ways? Roughly ten percent of that. And I hate to put character to that because it's really largely depending on how much we can recycle. But roughly ten percent of that is that plastic packaging.
Twenty tons a day?
But just to note that if it comes up, we're not dumping it into a large dumpster that's sitting there and open on the farm. Um, it's contained and it's a compressed roll up. So it has a cap on it and it kind of comes up into a bear and that gets just squeezed in there and that truck takes that off. So that's part of it. Back to risk, it's, it's minimal and road control exists.
One of the byproducts of organic material decomposing is, is how does it sulfide? How do y'all deal with that?
So H two S is, is, that actually is produced, that's in the gas. So you're right. It's kind of a cool thing. Uh, inside the digester, we actually put wood and planks and it's not methane bugs, but it's hydrogen sulfide eating bugs that actually form kind of smell antigens on the inside. So a lot of that is actually eaten up by, uh, bugs inside the digester. But what is not is part of that gas cleaning process and that we have a gas cleaning equipment that kind of takes that out of the gas. I reached that line.
Sid bugs, you mean microbes, right?
Yes. Yeah, not insects.
My microbes, yeah, probably bugs.
Will the landfill fees be like in out of towner fee or in town?
We, we typically just follow whatever the waste mandate of the county or the township is. And at this point, we haven't done, didn't get into that really, but
Worst thing I see is traffic on six oh nine. There is already a lot of traffic from the landfill trucks and Tyson trucks hauling chickens to plant. So cool, but that's, uh.
I don't know that you could take two hundred tons a day across that little bridge down there to build.
And just rebuild it.
Yeah, rebuild it.
I mean, they, they just rebuilt it, so.
They did just rebuild it.
It's not plank, it's all concrete steel.
Oh, is it? I've been that in the theater hall.
Yeah, they did that three or four years ago, about a million bucks.
Okay.
They throw steel in the Yeah, I think it's twenty-two ton, twenty-five ton.
Oh, is it?
Yeah. It's got guardrails and everything on it.
It's like four, sit four or five.
Didn't move one tire at a time. Any questions for Nick? If we do, we'll certainly get them to you.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, if he has my contact, of course, I'd be very, very grateful. Thanks for me walking through that and, uh,
So what's the next step? Got to come up with some zone for that?
Approve this definition.
You've got to have a public hearing. On this.
Yeah.
So just to reiterate, this request is for a zoning text amendment to add the use definition, particularly in the A five, RP five districts as a special exception use. So the definition provided would be added to the definition section of the law through the zoning ordinance. And then the use would be provided, would be added, uh, as the permitted use, I mean, as a use permitted by special exception in A five and RP five, of course, if approved by the board of supervisors. So before they come for a special exception request, we would do the same thing like we do with the apartments and try to get as much information from the uh, related state agencies as possible so that you guys can make the decision for the particular facility that occur at Chamberman Warrior Farm with that information in mind. However, as before, this is the first one in Virginia. So zoning wise, there was no zoning precedent for this. So without, you know, I did, I did not have any comfort at all and sort of whisking this through as something else and not bringing it for you guys to just talk about and ask questions and all that stuff. This will set the precedent from state in terms of the project itself and then how we regulate them.
Did some of this come from other locations? Like, were you able to find that?
This is something that they brought forward and I really liked it. It was really good. I, I spoke with, uh, I think it's Salis, Salisbury, is that correct, Nick? The town manager of Salisbury, where they did a project. This is actually, so their projects are a little different in that this one is combining both on site. And so I think that, is this your first combo project?
This won't be this model or it's all of in New England where we can really compress.
Right. But, but he said that they, I think their, that project, I think initially the conditional use permit was approved in like twenty thirteen or something. So it's been a while and he said that they've relatively had no complaints. And he was a good, a bloody thought and so seeing that they required a conditional use permit, that's sort of what initiated, you know, as well doing this process to fire this as a special exception. If approved, as the ordinance said first.
Okay, well, open the public hearing. If anybody would like to speak, do you come forward, state your name and address, please?
I'm here to blame, I learned a lot. That's why I'm here. I didn't know what it was about. And I see a whole lot more questions that should be answered. I would love to see a just informational meeting in the community. I don't see that with the neighbors here. And that, that specific project.
Please state your name and your address.
Right for nine, one four eight one Grand Hill Church Road. Anyway, I'd just like to hear more. I'm not against it. I just want to hear more. I did have a question for somebody. What percentage of the input of this particular proposed project is coming from the farm?
Twenty.
So eighty percent of the project is industrial, off-farm, correct? Coming from off-farm.
What, what is coming out of this?
Comes back to that farm. Okay. Well, like I said, I'm just asking that neighbors that will be affected just as much as anybody in here. This is new to everybody. I, I learned a lot tonight. I, I've heard rooms of it, but I didn't know anything about. That one had a good point about the road. Hey, roads, mentioned a new bridge. That's ninety percent of that road. The rest of the road is harmed. That's Giles, really not, not six oh nine. Sorry, that's all. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak more, yes?
Harrison Warrior seventeen When this was proposed, this would be on my farm, works my dad. And neighbor, all the like, um, it says that's farm, it's or it's our
Surround.
Yeah, yeah. Two cents, three cents. One of our major concerns was the traffic. That seems to be apparent with everyone. We'll have to do a V I T study. We'll probably have Vanguard, it said to make the project work, they'll probably have to upgrade the road on all Giles Road, not just the bridge part. That's a main concern. Where trucks would be entering the facility. We talked about that and where we had current roads, farm roads, it's on a hill, you'd be coming into the sun when sun sets. So thinking about safety of people on the road, we moved to the entrance and we're going to put a road in the middle. One of our fields, not convenient for us. But safety wise and traffic wise, that seemed like the best choice. Um, so that was a major concern. The traffic for hauling the manure, that was also a major concern to us. Cause this volume will be about three times what we're currently handling as far as gallons of digestate versus manure. So part of the agreement with Vanguard will be underground piping. And that will virtually eliminate the manure tanker traffic on Giles Road. So that will come out of, I guess, the wear and tear on the road. Even though we're adding the truck traffic. And that will also facilitate helping out neighbors because essentially this is building a cow's room and that's all methane digesters is meant to be a cow's room being. And so then, um, all this digestate will just be fertilizer, just like manure. It's basically a fertilizer plant. Somewhat organic fertilizers, the byproduct. Um, and it will replace pretty much all of our fertilizer needs. And then we'll also be able to help neighbors. And so it doesn't just help us, it helps us and it should allow me and my brother to continue our farm until we're ready to retire. And if any of our kids want that opportunity, it also adds jobs to the community with the deep packing center. And that's piece of pain, full-time jobs. Since and oil. Since we'll, we'll be compensated for hauling that manure per gallon. We'll be able to give neighboring farms fertilizer that will cover their fertilizer needs. And it'll probably end up being half the cost to them of what commercial fertilizer would be since not just helping us, it's helping our neighboring. And then if the bedding, which there's questions about the bedding, that's a very common practice for extreme of large farms. Cause say you're milking ten thousand cows, how do you get that much sand? To bed ten thousand cattle shavings. That's all gone through a separator and all they bed with is separated solid. It's very common. But that also, if we have extra of that, that'll be a drought product. We could actually move that further away from our location as a fertilizer.
Since you're getting so much of your fertilizer from organic sources who envision down the road possibly uh, transitioning to organic milk production?
We haven't thought about that currently.
No money in that right now. Not going to.
We're more worried about, um, carbon taxes and consumers forcing us to show that we're zero carbon or negative carbon. And this would be a way to possibly in the future that doesn't exist right now, but there could be premiums or almost a requirement to ship milk to your co-op. You have to be carbon neutral or carbon negative. Cause that's what the consumer is demanding. Consumer might be Walmart, consumer might be Target, but that's what is being demanded. And this would be a step where we would be ahead of that curve if that does come to fruition. And again, that would also help us continue to be in business. Or I'm forty, so if this is a twenty-year contract, that gets me to sixteen. That lasts forty years. Gets me to eighty. Any other questions?
Anyone else have anything to say?
Callie Walker, ninety-two hundred South Amelia Avenue. If I understand correctly, this is entirely about whether to amend the zoning codes to permit an application of this nature. I'm in favor of that.
This is not an approval on the facility itself. It's just approval of the thing to anyone else have anything to say? Anyone? All right, then I'll close the public hearing.
We'd go back if it just goes into ordinance, they'd have to come before us again.
Right.
And then we'd have another public hearing and that's when Frankie would get more people to come and participate. This is just to get it into the ordinances so that it could come from them to, uh, to the planning commission. And then it would go to the board supervisors just like that. So it'd be a whole lot more education at that point in time than right now. And I can't speak now and I will not vote now.
They should come back with this.
Anybody have any questions or any comments they'd like to make about this? Basically just approving the wording for this.
I think, in my opinion, I think it's an awesome opportunity. If you have, that woman can utilize it and if county has an opportunity to bring that type of thing into the county, obviously we'd need to know more about individual operation, but I, I think we should do what we can to make the zoning work.
Yeah, I think it's very interesting. We could be at the top of the curve also.
Any other comments, questions?
I will say something like this, that, uh, Mr. Anderson's uh, point about the meeting is is not bad because the people are going to have questions. The questions, you know, need to be, need to be answered, you know, if it community meeting like that could be arranged, that would be I think a benefit uh, to everyone.
Are you talking about separate from the public hearing that we will have about the project?
Yeah, yeah, we've had them.
Okay.
And I would, I would recommend it too. I think that it causes a, a brand new concept, uh, something that's not, some kind of a hurdle in Virginia. I think you probably should have a town meeting or something, invite local farmers in and explain the process and see what you can kind of be idea for.
Get some fakers.
Any other comments or questions?
But I think that But I think at that point, having a meeting, if DEQ comes up with the regulations, they ought to be here too, so they can answer those type of questions.
Have it to towns.
Right now, they're still working on it, so.
Right.
Are you looking, are you dealing with regional office? Do you know? Are y'all dealing with regional?
I'm sure.
Or state or.
State.
Yeah, but central and regional.
Any other questions, comments? I would entertain a motion to approve this wording if anybody wanted to do that.
I'm moved to amend the text of the zoning ordinance to allow whatever that says. To, to allow agricultural resource reclamation facility.
I second.
Any other comments or questions? Aye. All approved. Aye. Anybody oppose? That's done. I'll turn the vehicle back over to Chairman Lark.
Thank you. If y'all have any other questions about that, learn to get it to me or to Brady. And uh we'll try to get answers. And uh we'll try getting up a meeting to better educate. But we would like, like I said, DEQ to have, have their regs straight. Cause I'm sure that's where we'll get some questions too. All right, uh, thank you. Only other thing we had on agenda, if you look to the back of your package. CIP committee met a couple of times uh with each department. First time with departments and second time kind of finalized uh what each was requesting. And you'll see it broken down yearly and uh of course, the school always have a large supply, but I guess the top one, and then you go to the back page, I think that's where it has uh high, medium, and low.
Next to the back page. Oh, next to the back. All right.
And we'll state the top one up for the county radio system upgrade. This, I think it's the second meeting we had, we just received word that we'd gotten a million dollar grant towards that. And I think that's about an eight or nine million dollar project.
Seven.
Seven. All right. So that certainly helps that. Any questions on, on this? This will just go to the board of supervisors as a guide and they can make it or whatever.
This new vocational facility, is that the thing that I'm like building for the county, pulling out of the vocational center?
They said part of that they could house within the high school. But this building would be mainly for like welding, plumbing, electrical, um, more like a shop type building. Right. Said the kids, you wouldn't have to run the buses and the kids could uh walk and wouldn't lose three periods. Like now they lose up to three periods.
Right.
I will note that after our second CIP committee meeting, the school board met to just evaluate their requests because of their desire to move forward expediently with the vocational tech center. And they voted to remove the athletic complex planning from the twenty twenty-four and adjust that to year twenty twenty-five. So what's before you is what the CIP committee had approved to come. If you look at the total of that prioritized list, you take out the one million three ninety-five, that would reduce you the sixteen-two for your total request for year, fiscal year twenty-four. Okay. Um, I will add that we have been working with VDOT since last year. Uh, before I came on with the staff, uh, on a potential sidewalk project. The county was awarded eight hundred eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and two dollars of transportation alternative program funding from the Commonwealth Transportation Board to construct sidewalks around the schools that would ideally connect to the sidewalks on Fivefold Road and then in front of the academy. The, there was some miscommunication between VDOT and the applicant on the county's behalf, which was the Commonwealth Regional Council. And so the budget to the project was amended, but the request was not amended. VDOT amended the budget, but uh at that point it was no longer, it was no longer accessible in the program. It was our applicant, the person applying on our behalf, so they couldn't amend the request. So we only got funded uh together with our match would be about a little over a million dollars for a project that's ultimately the original project scope is going to be around two point four million. So we convened a sidewalk committee, met with VDOT, and just at the most recent board meeting, we were able to present the update from that, uh, those discussions. And VDOT has agreed to allow us to do a phased approach to reduce the original project scope because the original mishap. And then we could move forward with an additional application to try and attain another uh lump sum of money through this next round. There's a training for this program on March twenty-second that Darryl Goff and myself are gonna attend. And so with that being said, I presented to the board uh this past month at their meeting what the options were with this, whether we should drop it or if they wanted to move forward and get some sidewalks constructed that they could move forward with a phased approach, which would require a two hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollar match to get the eight hundred eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and two dollars. So the county's met, the county's investment of two hundred twenty-two thousand would get the eight hundred eighty-eight to allow us to do a million dollars worth of sidewalk work around the school system to connect to uh hopefully connect to the academy. With this phase, we might not be able to do that in this phase. It's, it's according to VDOT's engineer estimates, gonna be about a half a mile of sidewalk. That's not including curb and gutter. So it will be sidewalk that is a few feet off the road, not immediately alongside the road. We have just uh are in the process of now signing the project administration agreement. We do have a project manager and I've been corresponding with him since the board made their decision. And they are curtailing the project administrative agreement specifically to our project. And so we have not signed it yet, even though we have received board's approval to uh sign it. With all that being said, it would be a request from the county administration staff to add that two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars to the CIP fund for this year's request, as it is a capital group. So for this year's request, the one million three ninety-five from the athletic complex planning would be removed from this year's request. But there would be an additional request of the two hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars for the sidewalks, which of course doesn't have any priority as we once again approved at the CIP committee meeting. So with that being said, is there any comments from the CIP committee members themselves or the planning commission as a whole, as how they'd like to prioritize that in terms of high, medium, or low?
If you get the money, I'd put it high.
Yeah.
I agree with that. It, it's been needed for quite a while.
It is.
Especially if you could phase it in. I don't think it need to be all the way around the school now. If you could just get it from the academy up to the schools so they keep the kids out of the road and all of the private, off the property. And also the schools told us that day that some of this uh air conditioning units that we're getting, hopefully they would request for grants. Instead of that seven hundred and thirty thousand, they thought the actual cost of the county may be less than a hundred thousand. The rest would go through grant. That's assuming that they get the grants. So that would save you another roughly six hundred thousand. So the, the school has, has done a little bit better job of uh asking what they really need right now instead of what they want so much in previous years. So I think and the board supervisors have met with the school board, I think a little more often, get a better explanation as to what they actually need and the reasons for what they want. So. What's your pleasure on passing this capital improvement, adding the two hundred twenty-two thousand and scratching the one million three hundred ninety-five thousand out of twenty twenty fours? Want to put that in motion?
Planning that one point four million is just.
I know. That's a little uh, yeah, somewhat.
That's a lot of planning. They tend to do a whole lot of planning.
You know, I'm good with marking that out.
But that's to redo the whole football field down in the bottom and board and the sports complex lights and all that stuff.
That's not even including any.
Yeah, I would think that the price would be.
You see, not trying to form. That seems very.
Can I get a motion to pass this on?
I'll make a motion.
Motion been made to second.
Second.
Need more discussion?
I got one thing, Mr. Chair.
All right.
The phase from what I got from the sidewalk committee is that this, this phase would not be from the elementary to the academy. This phase will be in school, property at the school.
Oh.
So we don't have to get in the pyramid of profit.
Like high school to middle school, stuff like that.
Stuff like that. It would be, be on property at the school.
It'll come all the way around to Adams's house, I guess. So always in elementary school, always to the middle school, right at that old corner.
I think so. It was not coming down the strip.
You're not coming down Main Street.
Not at this time.
It's got at this point, this phase has to have logical termina. So that's gonna determine where.
It makes sense. You have tons of kids going from middle to high, elementary to practices, everything.
We know that's two, they'd get eight out of it. Anything.
Yeah.
That's all I had to say.
Motion been made to second. Any more discussion? All fair, uh, motion making number C and I, all opposed, same sign will pass that on for their discretion. Uh, I do not know of anything else. I have heard that next month may not be quite as this thick, but could be pretty thick too.
But please don't expect that much information on ordinance text amendment in the future. I don't know if I could pull together that much information on stuff. It's that intriguing for the, the next testament.
All right.
It's a precedent that I know.
All right, well, I don't have any comments. Anyone else have any comments? Appreciate everyone attending. You know, appreciate Nick Kane coming and giving this presentation and we'll certainly try to set it up for maybe at least one, possibly two more, but I think we need to wait till the state of Virginia knows what, what they want before we do it. But there, there are has to be three others that would be in the state in different areas, not so much in this area that looking at it. So uh with no one else, anything else, I'll turn to me. See you next month.
Dave.
Hey, oh, hey. Let's think here. Hold around, y'all. Back some building, face me the. Sure.
I need to say this because I don't like that.
Cease.
I'm glad to get rid of that. I can't be.
That can't fit the bird sound down. Before we start thinking about the money on bird's face. I need a little clarification. And we, we do not, we do not.
The house.
Well, Damon's, Dad and Momma, a little house. Two acres in there about fifty-four miles. They bought that over. The house, two houses. Actually two lots, which is too big. He used to beater. He used to work. We bought that. We bought that. My son and if, well, I guess, from his son had a snake up his. Granddaughter.